Thank you. All right, moving to item D, Norwich LLC requesting a map amendment from RA 30 to Industrial 1 for property located at 1279 Norwich Road, assessors map block 4C, block 14. And I do see that it's a second application and they appear to be abutting lots. Could staff clarify whether two separate applications instead of one separate?
They are two separate applications because they are two separate lots.
Okay. So in the presentation, we have to treat them as separate applications in separate lots. Okay, very good.
Can we combine the public hearings?
Would that be advisable?
I try to make it up.
Okay, let's keep them separate.
Do you want to hear me talk twice, is that how?
I want you to clarify the differences between the two applications.
Two separate lots. Good evening, for the record, my name is Paul Arch with our conservancy. We're representing basically Norwich LLC, which in all entitles is Western Express. So everybody can know, um, let me get a copy here. What we are here for is Western Express or Norwich LLC. Um, has come into, is, has come into an agreement with Marty Topper and the other person that lives in the corner here. So what we're dealing with is two parcels of land, basically south of Topper Road and basically west of Route 12, okay? They're abutting Western Express. Now, if, a little history back here, um, we were back before you guys a little while ago that at one point, this was a building that was zoned industrial. Then all of a sudden, it became Ducks Unlimited. So it got rezoned commercial. We came back in here when Western Express came in and had it rezoned back to industrial. And at that point, we basically had five and a half acres rezoned industrial. The other seven and a half acres to the west over here was kept in the RA 60s, RA 60s, don't I believe? So that, and we determined that we kept that that way, that would keep the buffer between us and the neighboring. So now what has happened is Western Express has come into, again, they've come into a purchase and sales agreement, which they are purchasing the two parcels to the north of their building, okay? So what they would like to do is they are going to add these two parcels into their built, into their lot. They're not going to keep the two lots separately. They're going to be added in and become all one parcel of land. The intent, which, Madam Chair, which are we talking about? Are we talking about the, the house lot first a little bit?
House lot, block 14.
Okay, so that's the, that's the lot here that has a house on it, a garage and all that, okay? Right now, what their intent would be is they were gonna, they're gonna tear down the house, tear down the garage and combine the land into us here. Now, if you look at the, the overall scheme, what's going on here, all right? If I keep it the same way that you can look at it, is this, so as you can see, the purple here is what is currently zoned in the industrial zone in the town of Plainfield. We also came in here a few months ago, across, directly across the street to the north, the brown shade, we came in and got what was called a planned development package. That went on across over there. And then across the street, directly across the street, is the area that you people were just discussing a little while ago, that's where the gravel operation is going. So we think that by adding the two parcels and combining them into us is in harmony with the whole neighborhood that's there. Now, back to what we were talking about here is by allowing us to do this, we would still have to come before you with any other plans we had with these parcels of land, okay? The ideal parcel would be is they would like to tear this down and they're basically gonna make a parking lot, if that is correct, you know, a place to store the tractor trailers and all that. They're growing, they don't have room to put their trailers, they don't have room to put their tractors. But in order to do that, we would have to come back before this commission with, I believe it's a special permit?
Uh, I think just site plan.
Just the site.
I might have to check on it.
Site plan review. We'd have to come back before you anyways. But what happens is by giving us the ability to rezone this, gives us the opportunity to do what we need to do.
All right, so the first public hearing is on the corner lot. And am I correct that that also butts Route 12?
That is correct.
So it is a true corner lot, the corner of Topper Road and Route 12.
And the other thing I'd like to say is anything that is being proposed, that is being done with less than order, everything will come off of Route 12. Every, all the plans are come off of Route 12. There's no plan whatsoever that any could come off of the Topper Road.
This is a public hearing, so if there's anyone with a comment or question on, on the corner lot, which is the first application, if you could come to the microphone and state your name and what your comment or question is.
Madam Chair, my name is Paul Sweet, 260 New Road. I'm here to speak in favor of the zone change on those two parcels. I do some consulting work for Western Express. I worked with Mr. Topper and Mr. Montero to secure a purchase agreement for those two lots. What stands out, I came to see Ryan a couple months ago, if you look at the area view and you look down, they're coming, you only, there's only one way in, one way out, that's the way it's going to be. There'll never be anybody going on on the Topper Road. But when you look at the buffers that are required along Topper Road and Route 12, you essentially are picking up about 115 feet in depth. So simply put, the trucks would come in, not all of them, but they would come in, backup, okay? And most likely, that's where the boxes would be stored along there, along with other parts on the parcel. It makes sense. Western Express is grown, it's a large trucking company based out of Nashville, Tennessee. Their clientele is Amazon, it's the Lowe's, it's the Wal-Mart's, it's the Poland Springs, Target stores, pretty much east of the Rockies. And they, again, they need space. We bend before you. I think our history's okay as far as complying with the special permit. We put the drainage in there, it was required. As soon as we can locate eight trees that are all the same, we will plant them in Route 12. We could not secure the trees that Ryan or you guys were looking for. However, they will be purchased this year. K&amp;H does a lot of our, our work and so, make a long story short, I support the application simply because the company needs space and it'll make a much safer environment for everyone. And we are mindful, I've visited the neighbors on Topper Road, the abutting neighbor, talked with that lady, and I've also visited the one on going north, talked with that, that person there. And they have no real issues. I can't speak for them here, but we spoke, they're concerned, we've spoken to me, and that'll be addressed with the site plan, what they're looking for when I come back to you guys. So I'm in favor of the zone change. Thank you.
Thank you. And just for reference for the public, this application is for a map amendment, so it's the reasoning for changing it from an RA 30 to an Industrial 1. If you have questions about buffering, driveways, traffic flow, that would all be addressed if this is approved when a site plan is presented. So questions about buffering and that type of stuff is, is not related to this current application. This is simply the reasoning for going from an RA 30 to an Industrial. So just that point of clarification for anybody in the audience. Are there any other questions or comments from audience members? Any comments or questions from board members? Any additional comments or questions from staff? All right, hearing none. I'll entertain a motion on the public hearing for this application. I have a motion by John to close and a second by Roz. All in favor? Any opposed? Public hearing is closed. Moving on to the second parcel, Norwich LLC requesting map amendment from RA 30 to Industrial 1 for property located at zero Topper Road, assessors map 5, block 4C, block 5. So this would be the interior lot.
This would be the vacant lot. That's correct. That's here. And Marty Topper's here too. He's the one, he's the origin, he's currently the owner of this. So if he needed to speak to whether or not this is happening or not, he would certainly speak up to that. But again, it's the same thing. We are looking to have this rezone from the archery to the industrial lot. This will be combined into the main lot here, which is five and a half acres. Each one of these lots, I forgot to mention on the other side, each one, one of these two lots is roughly an acre of land, okay? So we're not talking a big piece, five acres, whatever. So this is an acre, I believe this one here is like 0.92 acres. And the industrial that is currently zoned is like five and a half acres. So by doing it, combining this, you would roughly be adding two acres, so you'd have like seven and a half total acres of industrial zone. So that simply said, here, the frontage, no frontage, we are not planning anything on Topper Road. Everything will be, you know, exited and entered in on Route 12 as it is here. It would just basically go use it and combine it.
Any comments from the public on this parcel and this application?
Hi Paula. I just want to be sure that we can't bring up any of our concerns about this. We can't talk about buffering tonight, we can't talk about.
So you can talk about whether you feel it should be changed from RA 30 to Industrial 1. But if your assumption is that it's gonna go forward with the project, then that would be.
I'm sure it is, but.
Would this require a public hearing or would that go automatic site plan review, no public hearing?
Uh, that would depend on the extent of the activity. Potentially, it could just be site plan approval.
So there may be no public hearing required?
Yeah.
Okay.
But if the planning and zoning commission deems it in the best interest of the community.
Then we can call the public hearing.
Of our neighborhood, correct.
Okay, so what I will say as chairman of this board for the past 10-plus years and being a member, and I'm sure John's gonna test as well, when we look at a site plan, whether it has public hearing input or not, we are very aware of what the buffering should be in order to ensure noise and privacy and all those things. So I can assure you, those items will be addressed at a site plan, whether it's public hearing or not.
Yeah, um, you know.
Especially if you know it's a concern because you're here, so.
I'm very emotional.
Yeah, so absolutely noted, um.
Yeah, I mean, we have questions that we want answered, you know, we realize it's probably a dumb deal, but, you know, we do want to protect our neighborhood and.
So what I would say is your concern is if it goes from RA 30 to industrial, that you have concerns about the intensity of activity and how it would impact your property.
I have concerns about buffering on Topper Road. You know, as we drive down, I, we don't want to see 100 trailer trucks parked there, you know?
So your concern is the change of use from residential to industrial?
Overall, yes, yes. But if, you know, if I can't do anything about that, I just want to protect the neighborhood as much as I can. We've been there 47 years and it's just been a quiet, plain, nice neighborhood. And now we're gonna see trailer trucks as we drive down our road. And, you know, we also have a dump across the, the other side of Topper Road. That's an area that's turned into a dump. And, uh, you know, what buffering there would be, if they could put up, you know, some fencing or things so that, you know, it's not just scaring us in the face every time we go down the street.
Yeah.
It's a big change. It's a big change for our neighborhood.
Okay.
You know, and we just want to, the resale of our homes, because a lot of times when you have things like that, it takes away, people don't even want to look at your home when they see a dump on one side and, you know, trucks, tractor trailer trucks on the other side, they'll take, they'll turn around. I've just had experience with that. They don't even want to go look at the house because of what was at the beginning of the road. Not our neighborhood, someone else's neighborhood. So those are things I, I don't know if I can address tonight or.
So because we don't have an application with a buffering plan, we can't address your concerns tonight. But it is noted for the record that you are concerned about the change from RA 30 to industrial because of the change in traffic and flow and what you can see from the road. So that is noted.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Can I maybe come into that?
Sure.
And just to note that Western Express is very conscious of that. And I think if you look back in the day, that's why we mainly kept all this as natural vegetation. That's why when we came back in and went from commercial to industrial, we kept the back half.
Can you speak up?
Here. It all kept in the residential zone. So nothing, this is all buffered. I believe they put, they wrote, they put a row of pines across here to buffer this. And also, as you drive in here, I don't know if you've noticed, but they have a stockade fence that runs the whole way here.
Now they do, yeah.
Yes, so they're very conscious of it. So that was all part of when we had the approval done and there was proper buffering put in place when it got rezoned prior to that.
Okay, what is, my concern is, Topper Road.
Then, then what would happen is the same thing, the fence would be put up on top of Topper Road to buffer it, so you wouldn't see it, just like you have it, like the fences up there now.
And then that would be detailed on the site plan application.
Correct.
Any other comments or questions from audience members?
Thank you.
Yeah?
Paul Sweet, 260 New Road. I'm just here to speak in favor of the application. I won't get into the site plans because I've been through that, and it is a public hearing. And Western Express is giving me marching orders to take care of the neighbors. So obviously, you guys are the final stock, so when it comes before you all, the other ones will make that decision, okay? So I just want to assure people here that we're not looking to drag, I feel, down to Topper Road or ruin their neighborhood, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Any other comments or questions from board members? All right, items from staff?
Uh, no.
Okay. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion on the public hearing.
Make them all hit me closer.
Motion by John to close.
Second.
Second by June to close. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Public hearing is closed. Calling the regular meeting to order. Are there any board members that want to take short recess? Or you want to just keep up? Totally up to you guys. I just want to check in. Yeah, we can take a five-minute recess. All right, we're gonna take a five-minute recess, folks. Your seats. Moving on to item two, which is additions, corrections to the agenda. Marian submitted one item to add to the agenda under new business, item B, site plan modification regarding Z 2021, 2095 of McDonald's Corporation. Do I have a motion to add that to the agenda?
I have a motion.
Got a motion by Roz and a second by June. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That'll be added under new business, item B. Citizen participation, this would be the opportunity to the public to address the committee on something that is not a public hearing item. Hearing none. Moving on to unfinished old business. Item A, Z 2021, 2214, continuation of Spicer Road Realty LLC, requesting special permit for earth excavation for property on Black Hill Road, assessors map seven, block 53A, block 55. Items for discussion? All right, so Roz has recused, so Kevin, you will be appointed as a member, voting member for this application. All right, so we have full, uh, five full voting members for this application. Are there any items that commission would want to discuss? So I, I'm noting in the staff report that the proposed hours of operation were Monday through Friday, 7:00 to 7:00, Saturday, 8:00 to noon, no Sunday or holiday. Were there any comments you wanted to highlight, Ryan, from your report?
Uh, no, I think we're just stuck on deliberation. We were not able to deliberate last month because we did not have eligible members.
Okay. So on the staff report, he notes conditions of approval. MyLARs are to be submitted for commission signatures, then recorded by the applicant prior to receiving zoning permit. Engineering review fees are to be paid within 30 days of billing or prior to filing MyLARs, whichever comes first. A $50,000 cash or surety bond be submitted and kept, kept current for the duration of the project for E&amp;S controls and site restoration prior to receiving a zoning permit. Correspondence agreement with Eversource regarding work within their easement required prior to receiving zoning permit. Restoration of each phase as an ASBilt of that phase is to be submitted to the Planning and Zoning Office within 90 days of completion. ASBilt is to be performed by a surveyor, A2T2 accuracy, and include the limits of excavation and area reclaim, side slopes, grades, final elevations. Staff also suggests that commission require an ASBilt within 90 days of phase reclamation, showing limits of disturbance and spot topography across the phase to determine compliance with the approved elevations. So given the requested hours are Monday to Friday, 7:00 to 7:00, which is the maximum allowable, does the board have any suggested revision to hours or did you want to keep as proposed? So given the neighborhood, I would suggest shortening the hours of operation as a condition of the approval. Just thinking about school buses, thinking about the neighborhood, I would think that 8:00 to 5:00 would be more reasonable. They are requesting Saturday hours of 8:00 to noon, no Sunday or holiday. Board could also adjust Saturday hours to 9:00 to noon if they wanted to. So it's really in your hands what you would want to do. If you are proposing a change of the operation, what I would suggest when you make your motion, under good practice, it is a good practice to make a motion in the affirmative so that a vote yes is for the project and a vote no is not for the project. Otherwise, it can get into some just Robert's Rules of Order messiness. So my suggestion to any member who makes a motion is that you make the motion in the affirmative. If you want to include the conditions of approval, then you should also say including conditions of approval as read. And if you want to make the modification to hours, you should also state the modification of hours in your motion. Are there any other items for discussion on this application? Okay, so hearing none, I'll entertain a motion on the application.
I would like to move to accept the application modifying the hours to 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and Saturday, 9:00 to noon.
And including the suggested conditions.
And including the suggested conditions.
As, as read by the chair.
As read by the chair.
Okay, we have a motion by June modifying the hours of approving the application with a modification in hours from Monday to Friday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Saturday, 9:00 to noon, and then no Sunday or holiday, and also including the suggested conditions of approval as read into the record. Do I have a second on that motion?
I have a second.
I have a second by Kevin. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? All right, application is approved. Item B was a public hearing that was continued, so I do need a motion to continue that as well.
Make a motion to continue.
A motion by John.
Second.
Second by Frank. All in favor of continuing? Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Application is continued. Item Z, 2022, continuation of planning and zoning. This was also a public hearing that was continued. And actually, Roz is now seated as full member, so Kevin, you are back to a non-voting alternate. But thank you for serving. So this was another public hearing, continued. I'll entertain a motion to continue this application. I have a motion by John, second by June. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Application is continued. Item D, American Industries, requesting special permit for earth excavation. This was also continued. So I'll entertain a motion to continue this. I have a motion by Roz.
Second.
Second by John. All in favor of continuing? Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Application is continued. Item E, Skanel Properties, number 639 LLC, care of Daniel Maginot, requesting site plan approval to construct a 1 million square foot warehouse with 975 parking spaces, associated drives, parking areas, drainage, et cetera, on property located at 91-105, 107, 113, and 143 to 151 Plainfield Pike Road, Industrial 2 zoning district. And speaking for the applicant.
Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Evan Seaman. I'm a lawyer at Robinson &amp; Co. in Hartford, here on behalf of the applicant's, you know, properties number 639 LLC. And we do have a PowerPoint presentation that we're just setting up right now, but I did want to introduce the other team members that we have with us this evening. First, on behalf of the applicant, we have Leo Layton. We also have our civil engineer and our tract engineer, both from BL Companies, Matt Brubin and Pat Habbo. And although we did obtain weapons approval, we do have our weapon scientists here with us this evening, just in case, Dean Justipson, Hall Technology Corporation. So I'm gonna keep my comments brief so that we can get into the project details, but I did want to briefly touch on the project site, the proposal and the regulations. So this is a project that consists of an assemblage of four parcels along Plainfield Pike Road, 91-105, 107, 113, and 143-151, Plainfield Pike. Combined, the property totals about 137 acres. The property combined is largely undeveloped. There is an ongoing mining operation on 143-151, the northwestern parcel, which is 91-105, is developed with a commercial building, but other than that, it's largely undeveloped. The property, as I mentioned, has run to John Plainfield Pike Road and is largely zoned in the Industrial 1 and also in the Industrial 2 zoning districts. So the project, as, as you mentioned, Madam Chair, is for a warehouse and distribution center of 1 billion square feet. It consists of a single building, a single story building, and associated drive aisles, parking, stormwater management features and related features, which we'll get to in just a moment. And as I mentioned, we appeared before the weapons agency, April 19th. They reviewed the application for compliance with the weapons regulations and they, they voted in favor of the application, issued the weapons permit. And this application also complies with your zoning requirements. The industrial districts, I-1 and I-2 zoning districts allow by right warehouse and distribution centers. So there's no need for a special permit or anything like that. This is a use that is subject to site development plan approval. And the only other comment I will make before handing it over for our PowerPoint presentation is that it also complies with the rest of your zoning requirements, setback, area bulk dimensional height, which we'll get into. And with that, I'd like to hand things over to Matt Brubin from BL to go over the plan details.
Good evening, everybody. For the record, my name is Matthew Brubin. I'm an engineer from BL Companies. If you guys don't mind, I'm gonna tape this next to the computer.
Yep. Just trying to.
Okay. So I'll walk you through, I think, most of the aspects of the, the site plans, you know, for free, if you stop and ask any questions along the way or way to the end, it doesn't matter to me. So as Evan said, approximately 137 acres. The map you see on the screen right now is a historical map taken from Google Earth. This is approximately 2006. Yeah, the laser pointer is working, but in general, you can see towards the bottom left, there's the.
The black laser pointer? There's an on-off switch on the side.
Oh, there we go. There we go. You bet. So in general, the site is approximately where the laser pointer is here. Plainfield Pike Road, obviously to the left-hand side of the screen. Obviously, this is an existing building that you'll see in this forward residential, obviously, zones to the, to the right-hand side of the page. zones to the right-hand side of the page, which is south. So current aerial from two thousand and twenty, you can see, obviously, there's been some clearing and some work associated with the current operation there, along with some solar panels that were installed to the west of the property. Again, residential still to the right-hand side of the screen. This next one here is an existing conditions survey of the parcel. In general, as Evan mentioned, it is vacant. Topography, for the most part, runs from east to west, so top of the page to residential to the bottom of the page, High Meadow Drive, and then Dow, which would be to the right-hand side of the screen here. There are weapons on the parcel, and as mentioned by Evan, we did receive a review and approval from them at a hearing last month. So the next slide here is a color rendering of the proposed site plan. So in general, just for color-wise, obviously, the aerial you can see around the perimeter is a recent aerial. Plainfield Pike still stays to the left. Anything proposed, anything in green is proposed vegetation landscaping. The gray that you see, obviously, is proposed impervious area, the form of either concrete pavements, then, obviously, the orange color is proposed everything. So in general, we're proposing a million square foot warehouse industrial building with nine hundred and seventy-five car parking spaces and two hundred dock doors and a hundred and eighty-six trailer spaces. I'm going to walk you through the layout of this so you can understand all of those aspects. So we're just going to start on the left-hand side of the screen here. So Plainfield Pike again is to the left. We do show two access drives, one here to the west and one here to the east. Those two driveways, because Plainfield Pike is a state-controlled driveway, would require an OESTA certificate for a major traffic generator based on the size of this development. They will also be required to have an approach permit. OESTA permit is in process, and our traffic engineers here, so we'll dive a little bit more into traffic as we move through the presentation. So we do show, again, two proposed driveways coming up, Plainfield Pike. That's obviously intended to be attractive if this building were to be split either longways or shortways for two tenants. They each have their own dedicated areas. The area that I'm highlighting now, it's obviously a truck loading dock in space areas. Obviously, the spaces along the building would be adjacent to docks. Across the driveway will be trailer parking spaces, and that same thing goes to the east here, trailer loading spaces adjacent to loading docks in the building, followed by trailer spaces across the aisle. So as you can see here, whether this is occupied by one tenant or two, the building could be split vertically this way or horizontally, and both would have access to regular standard car parking spaces and, obviously, docks and trailer spaces as well. So in general, we do comply with all zoning setbacks in terms of building coverage, building setbacks, landscaping, overall height. We aren't requesting any variances for the proposal that you see in front of you here. Just progress this forward. Oh, yeah, go back. So as mentioned by Evan, project attorney, this is overall a combination of several lots to form this larger lot. One of those lots would remain under control by current ownership, and that's to the west here. So this next slide will break that into view. So again, Plainfield Pike to the left. This is the western driveway here that's out in gray. The boxed area that you see in red is a lot that would be remaining, and this building back here would remain, this is approximately a five-acre lot that would remain under current ownership. There are two existing buildings, longer one that's being highlighted by the pointer here, and then a smaller building up on Plainfield Pike Road. Those would be demolished as part of this project.
Gentlemen, if you could take your conversation in the lobby, just because it is carrying forward. Thank you.
So the next slide you see here is a stormwater grading and drainage plan. The goal of this submission, obviously, that was reviewed by town peer review engineer, is to provide stormwater management system because we are increasing the impervious area on the property. The goal of that is to comply with two thousand and four stormwater manual and two thousand and two erosion and sedimentation control guidelines. In general, those two guidelines, we're looking to do a few things. Maintain existing drainage patterns, provide eighty percent TSS removal, and then mitigate pre verse post peak flow. How we're handling that on this property is stormwater management system consists of catch basins with deep subsonic hoods, hydrodynamic separators, and detention basins, both above ground and subsurface. In general, there's a detention basin towards the Plainfield Pike that was roughly circling with laser pointer here, and there's also underground systems here and here. Both those, all three of those systems outlet either onto the property or to adjacent weapons that are surrounding the perimeter. I think I'm going to take a break for a second, pass it over to our traffic engineer, and then I'll be back.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Pat Pavlo, and I am a licensed professional engineer as well as professional traffic cooperation engineer in the state of Connecticut. Uh, thank you. Tonight, I'll be presenting to you a few slides of traffic study and impact from the proposed development. The purpose of such study is to determine any impacts on the adjacent roadway and any mitigation necessary to minimize impacts if there are any. To do the study, we determine the study area, study area limits to be from Genven Road to the east and I-395 Southbound ramps. For the study area, we looked at the roadway geometry, such as number of lanes, speed, traffic control devices, such as stop signs, and volumes. For traffic volumes, we collected traffic in December of two thousand and twenty-one, and when analyzing traffic, we compared and analyzed three conditions or three scenarios: existing, which is approved volumes by Connecticut DOT for two thousand and twenty-one; no build volumes or no build conditions for two thousand and twenty-three, which represents the conditions without the proposed project; and other any potential projects in the area, which there were none; and the third condition, build condition, which is the no build volumes plus the site generated volumes. And for all these three scenarios, we looked at two peak periods, AM and PM. Thank you. So to assess the build...
Give me one more. Go ahead. Can I just have you bump back just maybe a foot? So I can see bottom of the screen. Thank you so much.
No problem.
Okay. You can probably bump back six inches. Awesome. Thank you.
To assess conditions, we looked at the volumes generated by the site. We utilized ITE Trip Generation Manual, eleventh edition, and this is a well-recognized standard manual that has been in existence since nineteen sixty's, and it provides trip generation estimates, such as for this proposed development, and it assesses it at eighty trips in the morning and a hundred trips in the evening. That means, yep, thank you. And overall, there's fourteen hundred thirty trips. So using these volumes, as well as the no build volumes that we assessed, we modeled the study area using traffic cooperation software, Syncro eleven. And the software provides results for signalized and unsignalized intersections, and it provides information such as delay, queue length, volume to capacity ratios, just basic statistics. And the results can be, they are assigned, actually, a level of service, which are in the grade system. A means good, and F means there's delay. Thank you. So in the study area, all intersections perform within acceptable level of service. So this graphic represents the study area, as I mentioned, the limits, and all the intersections, they're all unsignaled, and all of them perform at acceptable level. And just for the purpose of illustration, I actually used not overall intersection performance. They all perform at a level A and B. I used the worst movement, and the worst movement that you can observe is only at two intersections with the ramps. And that level of service is D, which means about thirty-second delay for that movement. So, next. So in the study area, all intersections perform within acceptable level, and our conclusions for this particular study is, first, we would like to have twelve-inch wide stop bars and stop signs installed at the access and nearest points from the site. The project, as Matt mentioned before, will be reviewed by LSA because it is on the state route and in accordance with the section of fourteen dash three eleven, and the traffic performs at acceptable levels. Thank you.
So back to site plan. So as part of this development, we've also included erosion and sedimentation control plans that the contractor and developer will need to follow as part of the construction of the project. So there's two slides here, phase one and phase two, that I'll move to shortly. So the goal of this is, obviously, to have devices in place that the contractor will install and maintain through the life of the construction project.
Could you hold one moment?
Yep.
Ryan, do we have paper versions of this so we can read the notes? My eyes are nothing good, so...
Yeah, so it should be starting on EC one, probably two-thirds of the way through that set that Ryan has.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem. So as I was saying, the goal of this would be for the contractor and developer to install these devices prior to earthquake operations and keep them in place until the site is stabilized. And by stabilized, I mean paint them down, landscape rerolling, things of that nature. So the devices that we do show, obviously, is phase one, when nothing is built yet, include things like silt sack, construction entrances, soil stockpile areas, temporary sediment basins, erosion control, and adding...
Could you repeat the page, Ryan? I'm sorry.
Yeah, it should be starting on EC one.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Do you find it?
Yep.
There's probably several, because obviously, we broke it down to just fit it on a page. So these are the devices that are shown, obviously, at day one of construction starting. And then, obviously, as things progress on the property, grades are met, building is installed, those devices would be updated and moved as the construction progresses. And as I mentioned, the goal of these devices to stay in place, be inspected and maintained on a regular basis by the contractor until the site is stabilized. What I mean by stabilized here is final build and final pavement and landscaping to an acceptable level before those devices are removed. The goal of all of this is to protect adjacent wetlands that are on and off the property, abutters, and also the state route, which we would be accessing from. Another aspect of our plan is a lighting plan, a photometric plan, that's part of the set. The goal of this is, obviously, to provide enough lighting for the future business for safety and security on site, and also to show to the town that there's no light trespass over the property line. That would be a nuisance to any adjacent businesses or residents. So that's, we have shown on the plan here, and it's, obviously, a little bit more legible if you guys have the plans up front of you, but in general, LED darts, diaphragm, full cutoff fixtures, state-of-the-art, and after construction, they can always be adjusted in the field if there may be a nuisance or something that people report to town staff. So they are, they can be amended as necessary post-construction. Landscaping plan is included as part of the set, obviously, taking sensitivities to the adjacent wetlands and the existing tree buffer lines between residential areas and adjacent businesses. So we, obviously, are providing landscape plan showing variety of trees, shrubs, and grasses on the perimeter of the project, and also interior to the parking lot areas. I know this is quite large, but if I need to, I can, obviously, go down and go through species or anything like that, but that's...
These are the landscaping for them?
Landscape plans, starting LL one. I don't know if that is possibly part of that set yet.
Okay. All right. So we're expecting revised plans?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the next couple of slides are going to talk about the exterior elevations of the building. So as I mentioned earlier, obviously, this is a million-square-foot rectangular-shaped building, the slab on grade, single story. The plans here, which are part of the set, are the exterior elevations. Obviously, the two long walls are the west and east elevations. The north face is Plainfield Pike, and the south face is the rear woods, but these next few renders will give you a better view compared to this. So this is the floor plan. Obviously, from orientation from the site plans, dock doors are on the long walls, and then there's nothing, just a regular main door access on the short walls adjacent to the proposed parking fields. Obviously, as tenants are interested and secured, there may be possible dividing walls and office spaces associated with each of those businesses. But this is, I think, the best rendering to kind of show you how this will fit into the neighborhood and blend with the town of Plainfield. So obviously, diagonally, just a little bit off the screen here, would be Plainfield Pike. This would be the western driveway here and here. Again, one of the proposed detention bases in the front. We do show the proposed parking in the front of the building, and from this angle, you can't see, but there's also that parking at the back. We do show this main drive with the trailer parking and loading docks on both sides. You can see this building here would remain, as long as anyone, as I mentioned before, would be demolished. And there's, obviously, the existing solar field that is off the property that would remain.
Just a point for orientation purposes, the existing driveway, will that be utilized as one of these driveways?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Everything needs to be upgraded. There is, let me just go back real quick so you can see. There is a driveway adjacent to the building that will remain, that will remain. These two new driveways here are new for the proposed...
So if we were to orient where the current driveway is, just so members can kind of visualize?
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Let me see that.
Thank you, Ryan. Just to give orientation idea...
Forward. There you go. Okay. So right here is going back to the concrete plant and also Shepherd's Building, Shepherd's old building right here. So this is the driveway. This is a secondary access right here that goes back to the solar fields and also connects into this building here. So this right here is the four-family apartment house. Plainfield Materials would be right here. That building currently exists, and their driveway is right about there.
Well, that's a small house.
Oh, that is?
That's where they had that small house. The next biggest up more is, the existing driveway is almost right here.
Okay. So then the secondary driveway would be where?
Well, you mean...
Top of the screen is really the existing driveway.
Okay.
Pretty close.
Well, this right here is the current driveway for the old Shepherd Building.
Right.
And then this is, this driveway is down below the apartments and goes back to the solar fields and also the Shepherd's old building.
Right, so on the proposed site plan, there's two driveways, correct?
Yeah.
All right. So the one that's more closer to the highway is pretty close to where the existing Plainfield Materials driveway is right now?
Yes.
Okay. So then, when we start to head west, there's the second driveway. So where is that driveway being installed?
Oh, no. So this one is close to the area where Plainfield Materials is.
Right.
This one is up higher.
Correct. So my question is, where is that driveway being installed? If you can reference it. So you have Plainfield Materials, then there's the little house, then there's the abandoned lot.
I don't know what... Let me see. I think it's just below the old orchard buildings.
Okay. That's, I just wanted to get orientation of where those driveways were. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
You did say we could interrupt with questions.
Absolutely.
I'll hold him if he needs to.
No, you're good. So obviously, this is a great bird's eye view of the proposed development, and just something I want to point out, just to give context to surrounding residential neighborhoods, right? So obviously, High Meadow Drive is just off to the corner where the laser pointer is now. We're approximately six hundred and eighty feet from that development. And then the Colonial Drive, the residential subdivision that's just off the page here where the laser pointer is, we're a little over three hundred and sixty feet to the closest portion of that property. Obviously, you can tell here that we have quite a large building, but also have a very large lot, and the perimeter, obviously, of this lot will be maintained as wooded area. A lot of it can sit... A lot of it consists of that existing wetland area that will remain untouched.
Question, building height? What's the maximum height?
I believe the maximum zone, Ryan, if I'm wrong, is 60 feet.
I think 50.
50 feet. So, obviously, it's speculative in nature, given the market demands usually end up somewhere in that 36 to 40 range. That also moves the caveat, the farther you move in, the weight of the setbacks, the higher it goes. Understood?
So, essentially, the site plan we're reviewing today, depending on the tenant, there might be a site plan modification that comes towards us.
Potentially.
Okay. Marian?
Question, traffic circulation, will traffic be coming in the western drive and exiting the eastern drive?
Yeah, a good question, Mary. So, both driveways, the larger one, you can see closer than the secondary one. The traffic study was done with two options in mind, whether trucks were used for just one or both. Functions... Both of them function well. So, the goal for flexibility, whether this is one tenant or two, is to either have trucks use both or one. They're both being able to function properly. So, the idea is if there's two tenants, right, if it's split this way, trucks and passenger vehicles can come into this driveway. They can park up front, and then they can park and use this side of the building. If there's two tenants, so it's split this way, there's a second tenant in the rear, trucks could pass through, or they could use this side of the building. And then, this would be a wraparound area as well for passenger vehicles to get to that rear parking space. So, there's... It's duplicity to be able to allow flexibility for one tenant or two tenants.
So, both driveways are proposed two-way traffic, not one-way?
Full access for passenger vehicles and trucks. And I'll asterisk that. This has got to be reviewed by DOT and OSTA. Any modifications that they make or propose, we obviously would have to follow. But we believe that they operate fine with clear sight lines. And I think as part of Ryan's staff report and your period of engineers, obviously, they'd want some clear signage on functionality and direction. Once tenants are known, whether it's one or two, we're happy to provide more clarity on site circulation. Does that answer your question, Marian?
Well, I just... I don't know... I'm concerned about the commission acting on an application where they don't know what the traffic circulation is for the site that they'd be acting on. I mean, I understand your concept for flexibility. I get what you're looking for. But the concern would be the commission would be acting on something that they don't know what it's going to be.
Yes. So, let me back up then. So, the only thing that we don't know is who the business is going to be. So, truck traffic, obviously, would come straight in here. Cars can either go left to this front parking area or wrap around, avoiding any cross-contamination, safety issues with the truck loading docks, and circle to the rear parking area. That same thing can happen on this side as well. They can go straight into the truck loading docks, or they can come and pull into this front area here as well.
So, I guess my follow-up question is, since DOT does have to approve, would DOT be approving multiple traffic ideas, or they issue one permit for one traffic flow?
So, they're reviewing the two driveways full access.
Okay.
And we're proposing both passenger vehicles and trucks to utilize either of those driveways.
Okay.
So, they have this application right now and they're...
OSTA is reviewing this, yes.
Do we know when we can expect a decision from them?
So, there's two aspects of the DOT permitting that this application triggers. One is it's a major traffic generator. So, instead of... You guys don't know, if you have 100,000-square-foot building or 200 parking spaces, you're considered a major traffic generator. So, that... This building, regardless of who it is, automatically triggers that. So, OSTA is looking at from the size of this development. And then, the second aspect, once that is approved, is also the encroaching permit. Actually, utility connections into the road, curving into the road, that's more of a kind of a constructional permit that the contractor has to have before work is done in that road. The OSTA permitting process is ongoing, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is ongoing concurrently with the local process, but they won't sign off on the major traffic generator portion of the project until local approval is in hand. So, it's ongoing right now. As soon as we have comments, we can share them with you, but they won't issue a final determination until there's local approval.
And we still need revised plans with landscaping plan. And on that revised plan, I would suggest putting a proposed traffic flow. And then, in the event you had a tenant that wanted to change that traffic flow, then we could have a site plan modification.
Sure.
That's my suggestion.
Yep.
Any comments or questions from board members I might be missing? Oh, yep, Chuck?
Madam Chair and Matt, so I have a question in regards to not just the traffic flow on-site, but as far as the traffic report. You know, you're making assumptions of, you know, the type of warehousing that's going to be done, and how does that impact the traffic report? So, you know, right now, we're assuming that the truck traffic and the majority of the cars are going towards 395. You know, what if it ends up being a different tenant? You know, someone, say, similar to Amazon, where it's more of a residential-delivery-based type of warehousing type of thing, or something like that? How would you suggest that the commission considers that in, you know, their evaluation of the project?
Yeah, great question, Chuck. Yes, so I'll pass the bat to talk about different land uses. But this is not set up as a kind of quote-unquote "last-mile-delivery" type that you guys have seen with your other Amazon project in town. That's on traffic that converts to van traffic, which then floods residential streets for that last delivery. So, this project is not set up to accommodate that sort of use. I would suggest that if that were to change, we would need to update and amend the traffic report to state that. And OSTA as well would want to see that changed because there's a very unique difference between general warehousing and industrial compared to a the last-mile-type residential facility. OSTA and DOT treat that very differently, and that's not what's being proposed here. And to your point, Chuck, traffic would be dispersed differently throughout the town, maybe not just going to the highway if that was a use. But can I add something that you want to add?
I guess we can add on to the fact that if it's a different type of warehousing that we're estimating or believing or proposing that it's going to be built, OSTA, again, through a certificate process, will require us to provide them with a new updated volumes again.
And how about timing for the vehicles?
Are you asking about peak patterns or...
So, like, business hours, when the trucks are... You know, the different tenants may have different hours, so you're going to have different peaks of trucks and cars and that sort of thing?
Right. So, IT Trip Generation Manual actually can provide you with 24-hour traffic counts or percentages distribution for cars and trucks. So, we could provide that estimate as well.
That would probably be a good idea, because if this is a 24-hour operation with three shifts of employees, then we would probably want to see what that would look like.
Sure.
And this is a site plan review, not a public hearing, so there is no opportunity for public comment. This is a site plan review. Chuck?
Well, so I guess what my question is, is how are we going to determine if this is a 24-hour business versus, you know, a 9:00 to 5:00 business? Because that's going to end up changing your peak traffic.
Yeah, so at this time, tenants I've known, assuming would be a 24-hour operation, I believe the traffic study has been done with that in mind.
Okay. So, if something comes in that is, you know, has just two shifts instead of three shifts, you know, that would be a pretty significant change in traffic generation. So, would that be something that you would then come back to the commission for?
So, the Trip Generation Manual, I can tell you, does not have the detail of two shifts, three shifts, or one shift operationally. It does provide you with traffic volumes for daily peak periods, and then it also provides a distribution for 24 hours, but it doesn't state what kind of assumption it makes when it comes to the number of shifts.
Well, shifts, I mean, like, as opposed to, like, a 9:00 to 5:00 or...
It does provide you with the maximum numbers of vehicles or trucks coming in and out of the site. And that's what we usually use as our basis.
Yep, Marian?
So, then, if you... If the commission acts on the application based on a 24-hour work schedule, and subsequently, it comes in to be only a two-shift work schedule, then you'd have no problem if the commission had a condition of approval that should the hours of operation change and a new traffic study would be done?
I guess that makes sense, given we don't know who it's going to be at the moment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think the greatest point here is that this is a site plan that is being presented with a lot of assumptions, right? So, if any of those assumptions prove to be false, then that site plan would need to be modified, and it would need to come back to this commission for a site plan modification. I would think staff would advise if the site plan modification was substantial or not. I know there's a criteria of whether it can... I think in most cases, site plan modification has to come back to us period.
Exactly.
Okay. So, essentially...
You guys can only vote on what you see here.
Exactly. So, I don't want anybody to think that we're giving any kind of blanket approval for five different scenarios. We will be reviewing and considering one site plan. And if tenants need to make modifications to that site plan, then we will have to see it again, period.
In addition, any type of modification with regards to traffic, it would have to go back to community D and T as well to do stuff with their approval.
Correct. Chuck?
I have another question, comment. Matt, the concrete plant on the plans, on the current plans that we have right now, that's shown to be removed, as well as the stormwater management system associated with that? And the slideshow that you have here tonight, you're showing that that's going to remain on-site?
Is this the best...
So, see where you have building to remain? On the plans we have now, that's shown to be removed along with the stormwater management system? So, if that is changing now, and that building is going to remain, and I assume it's going to remain as a concrete plant?
Yes.
So, the associated stormwater would have to stay? And then, I would think that the future traffic volumes would also have to include the future volumes from the concrete plant in the studies?
All right.
So, concrete's planned operational right now?
No.
We can modify that for a minute, yes?
Okay.
Next is just a couple of the renderings, just different views to give different perspectives. This is the front façade. This is the short wall that faces Plainfield Pike. Just, this is the parking lot in front of the building. On the right-hand side here, this would be the driveway that goes alongside of the building to access loading docks. And then, two more here. This is the rendering from Plainfield Pike on the western driveway, closest to the solar field driveway. As you can see, the building is set back approximately 500 feet from the roadway. And obviously, they created a climb, so it's very restricted view from this area as well. And then, the next rendering we have here is the eastern driveway further up the road. Same thing, you can see the building foreground here. You can see, obviously, a little bit of detention bases on the right-hand side. Again, very sheltered, obstructed view, as this is pushed back over a decent distance from Plainfield Pike Road. So, that's it for, I guess, my portion of the presentation. I want to hand it back to Evan real quick, but happy to answer any other questions that staff or commission have.
Can we get those renderings? It was just a A and F, by the way.
Absolutely. I can email them to you and to do our copy stuff.
Thank you. So, I just wanted to quickly address the issue of the condition of approval with respect to the traffic plan. Pat can correct me if I'm wrong, but this assumes the worst-case scenario in 24 hours. And just because, you know, there may be fewer shifts in the future than now, that doesn't necessarily mean that there will be more traffic generated. We don't know the tenants yet. So, you know, if there's going to be less traffic generated for actual tenant, it seems unnecessary to, you know, provide another traffic report for that reason. So, I wanted to just bring that up.
Just to clarify, traffic generation is going to stay the same. The distribution across 24 hours may change due to the shifts. But generation is based on square footage, and it remains the same unless we change the land use purpose, which we have to come back to you and OSTA as well. Sorry.
See, you would have higher peaks, right? You'd have more vehicles in a shorter period of time.
Instead of spread out over the 24-hour, right?
Thank you. That's why I'm not a traffic engineer.
Alright.
So, in summary, I just wanted to go over a few points. And if you have some remaining questions, it is free to ask our team. But as I mentioned, the property is owned in the industrial district where this use is allowed as appropriate. So, what does that mean? That means the town has made, you know, a decision of a matter of policy that this use is appropriate for property in the industrial district. Redevelopment of an underutilized site, this will help spur economic development and job creation. Consistent with the plan of conservation and development, the future land use map identifies this property as industrial. In addition, the plan of conservation and development also states the town has vacant industrial land and recommends that the town attract environmentally conscious companies to locate in town. And that's what we're proposing to do here. We obtained wetlands approval. What we didn't mention is, as part of that wetlands application, we're actually enhancing some of the wetlands through a wetlands mitigation plan. There's a robust landscaping plan and stormwater management improvements. So, with that, we know that you may have some additional questions. We'd be happy to entertain them, and we hope that you will approve this application. Thank you.
Ryan, did we get the comments from Fire Marshal, Fire Chief, and Steward Department on this topic?
You've done so already. You know, give Matt some guidance on it if you think it's acceptable.
You know, obviously minimize as much as possible.
Yeah, just to build on Chuck's point. So, obviously, the photometric complaint is part of the set. The goal is obviously no light trespass for nuisance. The light spill that does occur is at the two driveways. Obviously, there's a gap between the actual curb line of Route 14 and the actual property line. So, there is some light spillage over the property line in those locations. Personally, I think it's a little bit of a benefit. Obviously, a driveway is not an area of what you want, a dark spot or a gap with turning movements of pedestrians, maybe. So, but again, we're happy to take the commission's feedback, whether you want us to slide lights back. If there's no trespass, or you're okay with a little bit in those areas, it's a danger of safety.
Because the trespass is on to the roadway?
Yeah, it's on our driveway that connects to Route 14 over the property line, yes.
So, just item for consideration.
I think light, when light's good, I live out there.
So, we want to keep personal opinions out of it. Alright. So, once again, we do need revised plans. We need landscaping. We need input from other departments. So, given that, my suggestion is we continue this to next month. I have a motion by Ross to continue next month. I have a second by June. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, we will see you next month with the revised plans.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright, moving on to Item F, Norwich LLC, requesting map amendment from RA 30 to Industrial 1 for property located at 1279 Norwich Road, Assessor's Map Block 4C, Lot 14. So, this was a corner lot. Any item for discussion? Alright, Evan, go ahead, Ross.
I'm good.
Okay. So, here, no discussion. Do I have a motion? Motion to approve?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
It does need an effective date, so would you just modify your motion to include an effective date? Usually, the first day of the month following your meeting.
June 1st, 2020.
June, uh, June first, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, so I have a motion by June to approve the application with an effective date of June first. I have a second by Roz, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Application is approved. Item G, Norwich LLC requesting map amendment from RA thirty to industrial one for property located at zero to over road, assessors' map five, block four C, lot fifteen, so this was the adjacent property, and when making the motion, if you could also include the effective date.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve with effective date of June first.
I have a motion by Roz to approve with an effective date of June first. I have a second by John, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Application is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a great night. All right, moving on to new business, Elvis Real Estate Holdings LLC. I saw a note that there is a pending zoning board of approvals hearing, so we cannot act on this tonight, so I'll entertain a motion to continue. I have a motion by John and a second by Roz to continue, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, continued to our regular June meeting, which is the fourteenth. Item B is the site plan modification, Z two thousand twenty-one, twenty ninety-five, McDonald's Corporation. Want to give us a summary, staff or applicant here?
Well, no, there's no applicant here.
Okay.
These were concerns raised by the town's engineer during construction of the approved site plan, so Chuck, if you want to explain?
Sure, sure, so, the contractor in your approval was supposed to have the stormwater management system reviewed by the town engineer prior to construction?
Ladies and gentlemen, if you could just lower the volume of your conversation, because it's really carrying up front. Thank you.
So, they were to submit what they were going to provide for stormwater treatment prior to construction, they did not do that, and I stopped out at the site, and there were not any stormwater controls installed. So, we contacted the design engineer, the design engineer said, well, what we found is that when we started construction, the catch basins are actually dry wells, so the, of the three catch basins, the two dry wells, the two catch basins to the south, so the ones closer towards the package store, Mr. C's Plaza, those are, those are dry wells, and everyone understands what a dry well is?
Maybe explain for some of you members.
Okay, so a dry well is essentially the same type of structure as a catch basin, except it has holes in it that allows the water to reach out into the groundwater, or into the, into the ground surrounding the structure. The catch basin is solid, it captures all the water, and then the water leaves through a pipe. So, the, the northern catch basin towards Route twelve, that was, that's just a standard catch basin, it doesn't have a sump. A sump is a space below the outlet pipe that allows sediment and debris to accumulate in the catch basin structure itself and not go out the pipe. So, what, what they said was, you know, what we can, because these are dry wells, we can't construct what was originally proposed, so what they did is they modified their design such that they were going to have, it's, it's like a filter system that will remove any sediments before going into the dry well, and they'll have an oil boom that would also collect any oils or anything like that that goes through to the dry well prior to the water going into the ground. And so, those would, those systems would serve the same purpose as the original treatment system that was proposed for the catch bases.
But it is a modification to the site plan.
But it is a modification.
So, they did not construct as approved.
Correct.
So, we should require a modified site plan, in my opinion, the staff. I mean, we have to have it documented what, what actual conditions are, and then if there is any ability to have them construct it closer to what was approved, or we would be revising what was approved. I agree.
Right, so, so what they did is they, they provided an updated survey to me, and I was in the field with them when we were looking at the different catch basin branch structures, and then they provided new details and an updated plan to me to take a look at, to review, to make sure that that was going to be equivalent to what they had originally proposed. So, then through discussions with Mary Ann, we're coming to you folks to see if that's considered a modification.
I've given my opinion, board members, do you have any additional input or opinion on whether we should require a revised site plan for that?
Did they come to you, or you had to go to them?
I had to go to them.
So, if you hadn't done that, they wouldn't have told us, we'd be none the wiser.
Okay.
I wouldn't see that. Um, the filtrations, cell systems, how effective are those, and at what intervals do they need to be checked?
So, the, I want to say the main, I don't remember exactly what the maintenance schedule was, but it was either four times a year, so every quarter or twice a year. And, you know, typically, with these type of maintenance schedules, if you're, if you're really doing them and paying attention to them, you'll see, you know, how often the sediment accumulates in them, and you pretty much set your maintenance schedule around that. The sediment is probably not going to be as important as the oil removal, you know, because it'll be able to back any of the sediments out of the dry well.
It's a high-traffic area, so...
It's, exactly, and that was one of the things that we had all discussed when you came in originally, and why the town is that, you know, some sort of stormwater treatment system.
Thank you.
So, a modified plan perhaps would be a good start.
Yes, and you were reading my mind?
Yes.
Because obviously, the maintenance schedule would be different if it's a different system now.
Yes, that's correct, although it would be very similar to the old system, I guess.
All right, do we need to make a formal motion for that?
Yeah, we do.
Okay, so, given our discussion, I'll entertain a motion on requiring a site plan modification for Z two thousand twenty-one, twenty ninety-five of McDonald's Corporation. I have a motion by Roz.
Second.
I have a second by John, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay, if staff could move forward with that, that would be wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, reviewing and acting on the minutes of the April twelfth meeting.
A motion to accept.
I have a motion from June to accept. I have a second from John, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I will abstain since I was not present that meeting. Any correspondence?
Just the CFPZA newsletter that you have already received.
All right, report from zoning enforcement?
Due to the fact that I have not recreated the report, I do not have it at this point.
Okay, could we add that as an agenda item for our special meeting, or should we reserve it for the next regular meeting?
There is a special meeting.
We haven't scheduled it yet, we have, I was, but in my brain, I was thinking about Tuesday, May thirty-first, because it's the fifth Tuesday of the month, so there should be no regularly scheduled meetings that night.
No.
So, if that works for members, okay, so seven PM, Tuesday, May thirty-first, it is the day after Memorial Day.
So, don't worry.
I have tried to be charmed, but I don't think we schedule.
Okay, so if staff...
If that matters.
You could give feedback for us, right? It's just going to be discussion, so there'll be no actions, so, and then we would review again, so, I think we could, seven PM, Tuesday, May thirty-first. Awesome, thank you for your quick feedback on that, much appreciated. All right, report from planning and engineering?
Nothing other than my written submission.
Okay, I saw no other items for other, so seeing nothing other, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by John to adjourn.
A second there.
Second by June, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everybody, great work tonight.